...in order for today, Monday, March 11th, here at the War Memorial, please stand and salute our beautiful flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the father of this country, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors and guests, welcome to the War Memorial. I know that we were supposed to be at City Hall by now, but I guess it hasn't happened. But we do have the superintendent, or the, as I call him, the Building Commissioner in-house, and perhaps we can ask him exactly when we should be... It's you, it's you. And I know you're nicely and nice relaxed because you had a great vacation down south. So we're gonna ask you exactly, how long is it gonna take us before we go back when your time comes up? You do, you did. Mr. Clerk, shall we go to Agenda Item Number One, please?
The acceptance of the minutes of February 25th, 2019, City Council meeting.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
The appointment of Daniel LaBranche of 32 Dupont Circle of Brockton to the Brockton Community Access Board of Directors for a term of three years.
That will be referred to the Committee on Finance.
The reappointment of James Casseri, Brockton, to the position of Superintendent of Buildings for a three-year term.
That will be referred to Ms. Counselor Cruz.
I make a motion because this is a reappointment of one serving W. Ray Drop to what they don't suspect are old man necessary.
A motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of taking it? All those opposed? So be it.
I know that Mr. Casseri is here, so if you have a question, why don't we all do it?
I'm sure we can. Mr. Casseri, would you like to step forward? Good evening and welcome. Anything you want to say to your gathered friends?
I'd like you to reconsider me for my reappointment. And to answer your question on the elevator, the elevator is done.
Okay.
It's just going through the inspection process. Right now, the elevator company is doing their inspections to make sure everything's working properly, and once they're satisfied, they'll call the state in for inspections. But the job is actually completed.
Does anybody have any questions? Counsel Cruz.
So, do you think that, first of all, if you get that sort of inspection, all the things you're hoping to do is probably the general inspection role is, but, so, you have a hearing in two weeks, is there a good chance it's gonna be after City Hall?
I'm anticipating it will pass the inspections, you know. But the elevator company likes to do it all first because if the state comes out and inspects it and there's one little thing wrong, then you gotta reapply for inspection, so that would actually delay it longer.
Thank you.
And I know that when we talked about this earlier in the summer, I had anticipated December, but once the old elevator was taken out, we found the shaft needed extensive masonry work, and that's what extended the project to this point.
So the city got the shaft?
We got the shaft.
Yeah, I was gonna do that. Thank you, all set, Mr. President?
Anyone else? Counsel Derrinkort?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. President, I should say. Good to see you, just congratulations, this outlook for the year. But we got to be out there, so do you know when we will be able to go back to the chamber?
Well, that's the point. So if it passes inspection this week, we'll be back in service hopefully by the end of the week, that's what I'm hoping happens, so...
Sorry, I could not...
And I know you have to give probably two weeks' notice for your public meeting, so, no, whatever that is, I don't know that. Hours, hours.
We've been dying to go-
I'm expecting it running at the end of the week, so...
We've been dying to go back to City Hall. I think I will purposely drive around the city and inform everybody that City Hall is back open, so...
I can't wait to have you back there, my zoning board meetings.
What's so unfortunate is that, Susan and I, I don't know if you have, but I have not even stepped in the chamber since I got here. So I think it would be a very wonderful time for all of us to actually go there and enjoy the chamber.
I have a surprise for you in the chambers when you get there as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You guys are so far away, I can barely see you, I think I need binoculars. Counsel Nick Asher.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Casseri. I just want to thank you because you were in your office, I mean, I'm sorry to be in my first year as War Memorial Counsel, and I've been grateful to return calls and research. And I'll be even happier if I get to sit in the chambers before we go. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Can I just do a quick housekeeping? All these mics are muted unless otherwise, so if the mic is red, we're not hearing anything.
Oh.
There's a small button right in the front, make sure it turns green.
Interesting.
Do you want me to say it again?
Go ahead, why don't you say it? Thank you. Counsel Inay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Casseri, how are you? And I'm not going to draw you in any such way because I don't think any of us have to. I do appreciate all the work you've done in the many years you've served as the Building Superintendent, as I've been City Counselor, and even the years when you were just working utility in that department as well and doing other tasks, you always were there to do everything for everybody, and no matter how detailed it was, you always made sure it got accomplished, and you do that even now as the Superintendent of Buildings, and I do appreciate it. I do want to thank you for working with I and the city clerk during this past summer months to work on doing what we wanted to do in the council chambers and in the community council room as well, because I think it will make a big difference when everybody does appear there at the chambers to see that everything is pretty much complete too. And I was there just last week while they were finishing the microphone systems and seeing what was going on there as well, so I just appreciate that, and I'm sure all the councils were, but again, thank you for your diligence and through you and April and all the other members of your staff that you had working, it really come out good and it looks good, so, welcome back and-
Thank you.
You got my vote.
Thanks, appreciate it.
It's an old East Side boy, you got my vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
I make a motion for a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Well, actually, I think a motion was made for to suspend the rules and act on the appointment tonight, correct?
Yes.
So the question is on reappointment.
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Derrinkort?
Yes.
Ianary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The reappointment is confirmed.
Make a motion for reconsideration, hope it does not prevail.
A motion for reconsideration, and what hopes that it does not prevail, has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor of reconciliation? See? All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed?
Thank you, Counselors, appreciate it.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Counsel Cruz, I'm gonna continue to do this as we go along until the joke dies down. It will soon. No?
Sounds good.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please continue.
Report of the Audit Committee for its meeting of February 27, 2019.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of Police Department requesting that $400,000 be transferred from full-time salaries to police overtime and order to cover general staffing charges and walking beat patrols through the area. The funds ought to originate from patrol patrol positions that are currently unfilled.
That's accepted and placed on file.
The mayor recommending the same.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
CFO relative to the same.
That too will be accepted and placed on file.
They have a communication from the Superintendent of Buildings requesting that $10,000 be transferred to electricity and $10,000 from building grounds to overtime due to unexpected expenses for emergency calls during the evenings and weekends due to aged city buildings, severe weather, winter weather, emergency calls from fire police, after-hours inspectional services, and upkeep of heating on the Rock Stadium and Shaw Center.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
The mayor recommending the same.
That too will be accepted and placed on file.
CFO relative to the same.
And accepted and placed on file.
They have a petition of Daniel Gill Jr. of 531 South Street, East Bridgewater, for a garage license located at 12 Riverside Avenue, Dr. Mass, in Clerk's Office, October 12, 2018, hearing assigned for December 27, 2018, at 7:00 P.M. In council, December 27, 2018, postpone until January 14, 2019, City Council meeting. In City Council, January 14, 2019, hearing held, referred to public safety. That report was favorable. In City Council, February 25, 2019, postpone until March 11, 2019, City Council meeting.
The question is on granting by hand vote. All those in favor of granting?
What was it?
All those opposed?
Did you have one?
The hearing was held and completed to a 10-2, and then the committee postponed. Then I think it was postponed at Shaw, but I think maybe if we ask the-
Counsel Nick Asher.
That was number 11?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Gill is here this evening if anybody had any questions for him.
We had already conducted a public hearing on this, though, and it was referred to the Committee on Public Safety, and it's just coming back to us, so technically it's all granted, unless somebody wants to ask him a question, if you...
I think-
Does anybody wanna, if you wanna... Counsel Nick Asher, do you want to ask a question? We can-
I don't have any questions, no.
Hold on, well then-
Mr. President, could we just read the stipulations into the record, then, if-
Well, it's a, excuse me, it's a garage license, so there aren't any-
Okay.
All right, so-
Questions on granting.
So let's do that again. The question's on granting by hand vote. All those in favor of granting? All those opposed? License is granted.
Thank you.
Number 12.
Petition of L.L. Auto Repair, Armando Mendez, of 17 Middle Avenue, Braintree, for motor vehicle repair body license located at 12 Riverside Avenue, Brockton, in Clerk's Office, October 12, 2018, hearing assigned for December 27, 2018, at 7:00 P.M. In City Council, December 27, 2018, postpone until January 14, 2019, City Council meeting.
Yeah.
In City Council, January 14, 2019, hearing held, referred to public safety. That report was favorable. In City Council, February 25, 2019, postponed until March 11, 2019, City Council meeting.
Counsel Nick Asher.
Thank you, good evening. At this time, I need to ask for another postponement. I heard from the petitioner today, Mr. Mendez. Unfortunately, he had to go out of state with family and is not here, and this evening I was handed the missing information that we were looking for to complete his application. So this time, I think I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until our next City Council meeting.
Second. Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. Postpone, all those in favor postpone it, all those opposed postpone until our next council meeting.
Very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Number 13, sir.
An audit in Chapter 14 of Petis miscellaneous, 14-49, Pan Hanley, in City Council, July 23, 2018, ready for the Standing Committee on Audits. That report was favorable as amended.
All right, so we're gonna do this in two parts. The first is a question on grant, on a question on the amendment.
Just to get that to the fore, do you want to-
No, I think that's what it says on it.
No, he did, just follow. Just go through it as amended. It's the amendment. Amendment, so the question's on amended, and then the question on as amended.
Huh? Do we wanna, Mr. Chairman?
You're all set.
Huh? On the amendment.
The question is on the amendment.
Yeah, but somebody's gotta read the amendment.
Somebody requested to read the amendment.
So we're gonna take a vote on the amendment.
Uh-huh.
Does somebody wanna, is somebody requesting to read the amendment, or we're just gonna go right through?
Make a motion to have the amendment read, please. I can't-
Got the amendment.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of reading the amendment? All those opposed, we're gonna read the amendment.
Oh, we're on the amendment 13, yeah.
Mr. President.
Counsel Solon.
There was actually quite a few amendments on the Audit Committee that evening, and I know Attorney Resnick had incorporated that into the document. It wasn't just one simple verbiage change, there were a few.
The attorney said if we give her a minute or so, she will pull them up and go right through them.
Thank you.
I got the amendment here, everybody's-
There was a lot. I'll just send it over.
Why don't we just take a short recess and then we'll come back on here, just to try to figure this out.
Yep, so the amendments are to include the word "written" before the word "permission" in subsection 2F. To strike out the words on any day after sunset or before sunrise in subsection 5. To strike the last sentence of section 6A. To strike "written notice" to cease and desist the solicitation and insert in its place a fine of $100, and to strike the following language continuing through subsequent violations and then inserting in its place a fine of $200 for the second violation and any violation thereafter in subsection 6A. To insert the words "by the Brockton Police" in subsection 6A after the words of this order. Strike number 15 and insert in its place 25 in subsection 2E. To insert the following after ATM, machine, bank, and/or financial institutions in subsection 2E. To insert the following language as subsection 2I in city-owned buildings or on property operated by the city of Brockton, including not limited to public schools. To insert the following language as subsection 2J within 25 feet of any houses of worship or churches within the city of Brockton. Those are the only amendments.
I believe the question is on passage to a third reading by, as amended, by a hand vote.
President, we just have to vote on the amendment first, and then we could pass it as amended.
I can't hear, what did he say? I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
That it has to be-
I believe we just have to take a lawful vote to accept the amendment that counsel just read.
Right.
Then we could pass it to a third reading as amended.
Right.
All right, well, the growing pains continue. The question is on the amendment by hand vote. All those in favor accepting the amendments? All those opposed? The amendments carry. Now, the question is on passage to a third reading as amended by hand vote. All those in favor of passage to the third reading? All those opposed? It goes to a third reading. Number 14, sir.
An audit, an audit amending Chapter 2 of the revised auditors, yet hereby ordered that an audit amending Chapter 2 of the revised auditors, audits dated February 12, 2018, be amended by inserting G at the beginning of the text whereby the entirety of said in audit amending Chapter 2 of the revised auditors shall be a continuation of Article 13, Section 11-211, and shall be inserted into Section 11-211, a subsection G, to continue after subsection F, relative to Article 13, Motor Vehicle Repair. In City Council, November 13, 2018, ready for the Standing Committee on Audits. That report was favorable.
The question is on passage to a third reading at, by hand vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? The order carries.
An audit amending Chapter 2 of the revised auditors dated February 12, 2018, to revise second entitled amendment to delete the reference in the first line to section 11-211 and to insert in its place section 11-14. In City Council, November 13, 2018, ready for the Standing Committee on Audits. That report was favorable.
The question is on passage to a third reading by hand vote. All those in favor of a third reading? All those opposed? The question carries. Number 16, sir.
Order that the sum of $7,800,000 is appropriated to pay cost of making improvements to the city's wastewater treatment facilities, including the payment of all planning and engineering costs and all other costs incident-
President! Out of respect for the city clerk, he's already read this many times, I'm gonna make a motion to waive the reading.
Second. Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor of dispensing of the readings? All those opposed?
Thank you, Counsel. In City Council, January 28, 2019, ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable. In City Council, February 11, 2019, motion to refer back to Finance Committee, and was properly seconded. Motion carried by a roll call vote. That report was favorable. In City Council, February 25, 2019, passed to a third reading by a hand vote.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Derrinkort?
Yes.
Ianary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Order is adopted.
Order, in order to fund the agreement between the city and the Brockton City Hall Administrative Services Union regarding compensation and position reclassification study, the City Council authorized the appropriation in the amount of $42,000 from the stabilization fund to various departments as part of memorandum of understanding for the period of 7/1/16 to 6/30/19 between the city of Brockton and Brockton City Hall Administrative Services Union. Scrivener's error upon the above order, originally Brockton City Hall Employees Union, corrected to read Brockton City Hall Administrative Service Union. In Council, January 28, 2019, excuse me, ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Derrinkort?
Yes.
Ianary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order, in order amending licensing and business regulations for marijuana businesses, section 1.009B2 of the licensing and business regulations is hereby amended.
That will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
Amendment of zoning map parcel ID 161-095235 East Ashland, be it ordained pursuant to section 27-5 of the city auditors, the zoning map whereby references may to and in cooperation of said boundary of each of the zones established as shown on the map entitled the city of Brockton, Massachusetts, zoning district map dated November 10, 1967, and thereafter amended that said map be amended to reflect the following zoning change, parcel ID 161-095235 East Ashland Street, I current to C2 zone.
That will be referred to the Committee on Ordinance.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Cottage Grove Avenue extending from the end of the 1967 layout of Woodard Avenue, subtly a distance of about 322.27 feet, more or less, and for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton.
That will be referred to the Committee on Real Estate.
Order that the City Council, acting on behalf of the city of Brockton, for consideration of $1-
Can I make a, can I make a point, if I might, Mr. President?
Ms. Counsel Inay.
That item should be going to ordinance, um, excuse me, should be going to finance and planning. That's an acceptance of a street to become a public way. Wouldn't be going to ordinance.
You can do that, you can do that, or you can do-
That's how we've always done it, I don't think it's something new this evening.
Counsel, I think what we might want to do is just to kind of vet this out at real estate.
Why? I want to know the full-
That's what it said on paper.
I want to know the explanation of why we would have vetted it out in real estate.
That's what it said on the paper, that's all.
But did it come down from Mr. Newton that way? I don't think so. I, with him and the DPW Commission in regards to it.
Through the chair, if there's a question on it in real estate, real estate can refer to the other committees.
Point of information?
I can't go from committee to committee, though.
As someone-
Go ahead, Counsel Lally.
I'm on, I still have the floor, Counsel Lally, I'm sorry. I mean, I'm on real estate, that's fine, but what I'm saying is, we've never done that before. It's the same as he's done 25 streets in the last two years, and what have we done? They're going to finance and planning, and all of a sudden, this is gonna go to real estate.
You can just change it to that.
If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but don't say that. Mr. President-
Go ahead, Mr.-
I just want to echo the sentiments of the dean. That is the procedure that we follow in, relative to street acceptances. Counsel Lally, you concur with that, correct?
I do. It just goes to Finance and Planning Board.
Correct. Just a scrivener's error. Thank you.
Order form of a motion.
All right, you want to make that a form of a motion, that we send this to Finance and Planning?
I will, Mr. President. I make a motion that we send this to Finance and to Planning.
Second.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded, sent to Finance and Planning. All those in favor? All those opposed? To Finance and Planning it shall go.
Thank you.
And I'll cross this out.
Okay, and we are on-
Twenty-one.
Order that the Brockton City Council, acting on behalf of the city of Brockton, for consideration of $1, is hereby granting an easement to Massachusetts Electric Company. The Massachusetts Corporation, having its principal office at 46 Yan, wrote Walt Van Mass for the purpose of unrestricted 24 hours, a day, seven days a week, year-round, ingress and egress by persons, equipment, or vehicles of various roads from the public way to access grantees electric facilities, where they're now existing or here and after installed, located on certain real property abutting to grant its land, which abutting real property is now known as Zero West Elm Street, Brockton, Massachusetts, and identified as Brockton Assessor Parcel ID 091-004 to provide electric service to said abutting real property and others, and further that the City Council authorizes the mayor to execute the grant of easement and to make other action necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of the same.
That will be referred to Finance.
We have an appropriation in the amount of $400,000 from full-time salaries to police overtime.
That will be referred to the Committee on- Mr. President?
Ms. Counsel Monahan. I'd like to take number 23 and the suspension of the rules and act on it tonight, as Mr. Casseri's here tonight.
Number 23.
Yeah.
Number 23.
Can I read it first?
Can we read it?
Correct.
An appropriation in the amount of $20,000 from public property purchases of services to public property overtime.
The motion has been made for us to suspend the rules and take this item tonight and also act on it tonight as well. All those in favor suspending the rules and act on it tonight? All those opposed? We shall suspend the rules. I believe that the Building Commissioner, my colleague, is here.
This is just to supplement our overtime, to make sure we don't run out. We've been using a lot of it this year, and with the addition of the Rocks and Shaw Center, that's eaten up quite a bit of it, and I anticipate using more there, so.
More favorable.
Any questions to the building commissioner?
And with the addition of the Rocks and Shaw Center, that's, uh, eaten up quite a bit of it, and I anticipate using more there, so. Move favorable.
Any questions to the building commissioner? Should I call the commissioner or just building superintendent?
I am a building commissioner, but my title is superintendent. It should be building commissioner slash superintendent. That's a different matter.
Slash.
Uh, anybody, anyone have a question for the superintendent? Sorry. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Daren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?[1528.83]